Scott Murray must be in.
Okay, we'll go ahead and bring the city council meeting to order. I'd like to first ask everyone to stand and join reciting the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Phyllis, could you please do the roll call?
Craig Koschak.
Here.
Matt Dyer.
Here.
Tyler Fongkamp.
Here.
Scott Murray's absent. Wiley Surt.
Here.
Okay. We've all given a chance to preview the minutes from the last meeting on April 4th.
Make a motion, accept them as emailed.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Okay. Okay. Where's Jeff at? Since Jeff is up here in the first meeting, we'll actually talk about this meeting. Jeff, um, is asking for approval to use money from Betty Walters' fund for a fire extinguisher trainer.
Our current trainer has been repaired multiple times and it cannot be repaired anymore. I did secure some monies from the hospital. They are willing to pay a portion of it. I don't have a price back from the company yet, and I do have some money set aside in a non-reverting fund until I know what the actual price is. I would use that non-reverting fund just in case. I'd like to have permission to use a little bit of that Betty Walters' fund towards the purchase of a trainer. We have a couple of companies, Bungy and the hospital, want the extinguisher training done this year.
How much money is there in that fund you're talking about?
In the one, Betty Walters?
No, no, the one you're going to use first.
I'll have to get with Phyllis on that. I just spotted that tonight when I came down. I don't know exactly. I know it was a couple thousand dollars.
And you would go there first?
I would go there first, yes. And then last resort, use the Betty Walters' fund if possible.
And this is a unit that you take out to the industry?
Yes, we take out to the industry. It actually uses live fire, so it's a propane tank, but everything is done with a dead man switch, so whoever's controlling it, if they get, if they get too close, you let off the button and it goes out. So everything is controlled by the instructor.
Chairman?
It's actually something that all the city employees need to know.
I'm sorry, I can't. I didn't hear.
It's also something that every city employee needs to make sure at some point. So it's, you know, beneficial for the employees also.
Yeah. Fire extinguishers don't make a whole lot of sense if you don't know how to use it.
No.
Along with the, uh, fire safety park at, uh, Worthman Field, uh, you know, to train the kids and things like that, I don't think it's a bad idea at all. I think it'd be good for our community. In fact, I'll make a motion that we approve.
I'll second.
What's your name? Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Okay. Thanks.
You'll be sticking around for the resolution.
Yeah. One second. Yeah. So EMA, um, has passed the resolution the county has. It's a multi-hazard mitigation plan, and we have the option, so when they ever, whenever they have to try to file for grant money or anything after, after something happens, um, we need to establish the resolution also. We can do it ourselves, or we can piggyback on the county with the resolution they are, they've already written. So, um, I'm going to ask that we just piggyback, piggyback on the, on the county's resolution since they've, they've already written it. I think Ann's already reviewed it.
And you're okay with that, Ann?
Yes. It makes the city eligible for the funding as well, um, and puts us under the umbrella of the county. So in the event that there's an emergency, um, or need for emergency relief funds, this resolution or the city's adoption of it would allow us to be able to petition for relief funds as well.
Hopefully, we never have to use it.
Right.
So we just need a motion to go ahead and, I think basically, I think Barb just needs me to send her an email.
Send her an email saying that you adopted the county's resolution.
Right.
And that'll throw us into that adoption.
So it's just a matter of a motion to adopt the resolution?
And then probably have Dan sign it.
Is that correct?
Well, I'm not seeing that. Adopt the resolution and authorization for the mayor to communicate with EMAs out to the city's adoption of it.
Okay. So moved.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Okay. Thank you.
That was called the EMA what?
The multi-hazard mitigation plan. I forgot, uh, we had a, uh, one of the Mayor's Youth Council students in here. Do you want to stand up and introduce yourself?
Um, I'm, I'm a K-814.
All right. Thank you for coming. We appreciate it.
Welcome.
And she's already on a couple of the project committees that we've been working on, so we've now split the council into different groups and they're working on projects, so.
Great. Good.
Well done.
I, there'll be a report back at some point as they make progress on their?
Yeah. I'll try to about once a month, kind of give ideas and, or, you know, give updates on what's going on. Um, right now, a couple of them are working on Downtown Decatur Day is June 17th, um, so there's a couple of groups working on projects for that day. So, um, yeah, it's been great. Okay. Um, here's, we need to make a matter-of-record conflict of interest with disclosure for Armand Atturney. Um, she works on our internet, our website, and I think she's also going to do something else for the city. Is that right?
Yeah, she's gonna work part-time for the parts department.
I'll make a motion to make that conflict of interest a matter-of-record.
I'll second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Okay. Is that where you want it? Okay. Um, I guess we have some, some guests here. Stan, um, you want St. Clayton? And Michelle? You guys all coming up? All right. So Michelle has council on aging at the Merritt Center, and, uh, that's been going well, and, uh, the whole senior center part of it's been expanding. I mean, every time I go in there, there's more and more seniors out there playing pool and, um, just enjoying their time out there. I think Stan has some things to talk about. The, the county has a chance to open up more of a public transportation, transportation program. It's not just council on aging, so he'll probably talk about that a little bit, and I'll leave it more open to you if you want to talk.
Yeah, that's fine. I appreciate you having us. Uh, just, just kind of to make it clear, we've got Michelle Lingerich, our, our director of council on aging, and Clayton Lingerich, who's been working it with us and sitting in on some of the meetings we've had regarding this. So I appreciate them being here too. But I guess I'd like to start off by talking a little bit about the services that, uh, are offered over there. When we moved council on aging over there, it just was real, uh, practical, uh, for that agency over there to operate council on aging, plus the transportation for elderly and disabled. So we've got an opportunity to expand that service to a full public transportation through the 5311 program that the state offers. And so that would open that transportation up to all county residents. So it, it's an exciting opportunity for, for a lot of reasons, so, um, if, if we want to talk about some of the advantages, and I don't know, Clayton would like to speak to some of the advantages like for courts and probation and community corrections, uh, and just some, some civic advantages to that, having that as a public program.
And I, I am on the corrections, uh, community corrections board, and, and you do hear one of the things that, uh, some of the people miss their appointments, um, and get violations because of lack of transportation. So, um, there's definitely a need for public transportation. I've actually picked up a couple of people walking through town, and they were not originally from here, and they were kind of surprised that we didn't have any kind of public transportation. So this is definitely a needed, um, asset in our community.
Exactly. To add to that, I got some of these statistics from Ian Gilbert. Said 45% of his current caseload over there, community corrections, don't have licenses, uh, which affects their ability to, to make the appointments needed. Um, the same from Jack Odell. He said a lot of times, um, people on probation don't necessarily have, um, driver's licenses, and he has even caught some except people with suspended driver's license, driving a block over, um, and then walking, and then they're caught violating their probation, making a flurry of other problems. So from those two aspects, both of those departments are, are happily behind this program.
You know, also even outside of their programs, it's still going to encompass the elderly and disabled, but like I said, it'll be all residents, uh, so that'll be for scheduled appointments, and it represents convenience for many and a necessity for others. Uh, this is going to be steady and dependable service for medical appointments, grocery stores, and et cetera. So, you know, at this point, I'd, I'd like to have Michelle explain a little bit more about that service, if you would.
Absolutely. So we just celebrated our 50th year, um, serving Adams County, and up until now, we've just done seniors, six-year-old and disabled adults. So to be able to enhance that and broaden that, to be able to help anyone, is exciting. Um, back in '07, Adams County had the opportunity to get public transportation. We had the state's approval, but, uh, the current commissioners at the time did not want to go that direction, um, and then that was the last time in 2007 that any single county was added, a solo county, for public transportation through NDOT. Um, fast forward, so when I started five years ago, um, the previous director, Sharon Caster, had been continually asking NDOT, when you got to open it back up again, Adams County needs this service, um, and every year we would get the same response. You know, there's a handful, 72% of the counties already have it, so then there's another 28% that don't. There's other counties that are larger than Adams that would be eligible probably before Adams, where it kind of became, I think we had not followed through with it before. Um, fast forward, until the last year and a half, I've been working with NDOT and, uh, Jennings, who's the head of the 5311 program, um, kind of got a view of our program and what we've offered, and how quickly and smartful we are, and just the service that we provide. And he has allowed, we're the only county giving this opportunity currently, um, to be able to expand from our current, I guess, 5310, means we would be classified as a 5311, which opens it up to anyone. We would be in a two-year demonstration phase, which, uh, is a little bit less on the funding side for two years until we can improve our work, which I have no doubt, um, that we can do that. The federal would pitch in $50,000 for two years, and then on the third year, the state of Indiana would also pitch in money. So we're talking, you know, our current, uh, budget of 150 doubling when we go public, and then beyond that even more, once we start getting federal and state money coming in along, along with rider fares, um, something that wasn't mentioned with the probation and the community corrections is, it would increase participation per student. I know over in Wells, when I go over, I will be over there tomorrow for a transportation meeting, um, they pick up quite a few student-age children, and what that would allow is more kids to be able to be in after-school activities, where now if they choose not to, because there's no one to take them home, if it falls between 6A and 6K, we would be able, it would be scheduled, we would be able to take them home and make sure that they get there safely. Peace of mind for parents, parents can continue to work, not have to leave early. Uh, the senior citizens and the people who still get our awesome service, provided for them extended hours. Um, another group that we could serve, that we would serve well would be Bye County. Currently, Wells comes over to Adams, picks up our Bye County resident, takes them back to Bye County, they're there for the day, and then they bring them back here, and then the Bye County baby goes back. We would take over that contract, and then we would be able to take our Adams County, Bye County resident over for their activities, and then bring them back home, as well as take people who would want to maybe work for Bye County, we would be able to transport them for employment, as well as other factories. So the possibilities are endless. It's exciting. Uh, the grant, I just submitted it last week, consisted of 30 videos. So I watched the video, and then I would do that part of the grant, and I would watch it, and it took me six weeks to watch all 30 videos, but I did get the grant submitted, and he complimented us on being able to submit it two weeks early, and, um, he, he was just very well pleased in the, in the county, and that, everyone pretty much has been very supportive of our willingness to take this on. I mean, it's a lot of the work, I'll have to double my drivers, I need to double my fleet, but in the end, everybody benefits from it. I mean, it's, it's just going to help.
Yeah. The commissioners have been very supportive of this. We, as we did our two-year, uh, economic development plan, uh, we moved money into council on aging specifically to support, looking forward to support this program. So, uh, and in the end, you know, with those contributions and user fees, it will be self-sustaining. So, uh, just, just kind of to, one of the notes that, uh, I'd like to point out, we, uh, currently have riders, uh, from Burn, 16%, Decatur, 68%, Geneva, 12%, Monroe, 4%. So it, it's a service that will provide for all the county, but operate out of Michelle's office at the Merritt Center, which has been working very well. So, uh, we're, we're looking at a launch date of January 1st of 2024. So it's a good collaboration effort. So I appreciate, we've had the opportunity to, to meet with Mayor Rickard and Craig and Wiley, and along with Hangin', along with, uh, myself and, and, uh, John Summers and Fred Velez from the county, to just kind of collaborate on this effort a little bit, and kind of do some, uh, thoughts back and forth on how we want to proceed.
I know. How is the fee schedule set for like user fees? How will that happen?
So it'll be by distance. And they will, when they call and schedule a day ahead, they will know upfront, your one-way trip is going to be four dollars, five dollars. Um, Todd from NDOT is giving me a list of comparable systems of our size and see what to start at, as far as rates of those.
And you mentioned six to six. So is that the hours that you run at 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM? Um, and that's Monday through Friday?
It is.
Okay. And you mentioned doubling your fleet, which I know you're going to need to.
Right.
Were you using the same types of vehicles, or will that?
Absolutely. Yes. Um, NDOT does have very strict criteria as to what they will allow you to transport people in, and since we will still be transporting seniors and disabled, we need to make sure we follow all their rules, but yeah, absolutely. I should be getting two more loves for minivans that are both wheelchair accessible in the fall. So that would get to six. I would like to get to eight, but we'll do what we can do.
How about your pool of drivers? Do they want to work more hours? Do, do you have more?
I think, I think they're probably going to end up working like six hours in the morning or six hours, like split the 12 hours. They're really at that stage in their life where they're not wanting a 12-hour shift.
Sure.
But, um, if we were able to open it up, I mean, maybe we could even get some younger drivers that would maybe want to do a 12-hour shift.
One of the things that has happened with the vehicles, uh, she does not have a garage for those vehicles. So currently, when the weather gets bad, in order for them to, to operate, the hydraulics to operate, she's had to just sit there and leave them running all day long, just so the hydraulics operate.
All right.
So even for the current service that she has, uh, a garage, I, I would consider essential to continue. And then to expand the service, that increases the need that much more. So, uh, what we've talked about is, is a very practical place to build the garages on the northwest corner of the Merritt Center property, which would be on the corner of Dayton and 12th Street. Yeah. So that would give us an area that would be large enough for a building to house the vehicles, and even possibly have like, uh, restroom facilities in there for the drivers, or something like that, too. So in, in discussions, uh, this area is about a half of an acre, and so if, we would, uh, ask to partition that off for the purpose of constructing that garage, and, uh, so we would ask for, for ownership of that half acre of property, you know, because it's kind of difficult for the county to invest money in a garage on, on the city's property. So, you know, we're looking at some ownership there on that half acre on the northwest corner. And then also with that proposal, uh, we would look at, uh, a long, long-term lease for the council on aging in that building, uh, which would remain in effect for many years to come, which we've had that discussion in the past, too. So, so for the property, one of the things that we have discussed is as you have a need to upgrade the HVAC system in the Merritt Center building, we would, uh, entertain the idea of, of contributing up to half of that amount for those HVAC updates and repairs in exchange for that, um, half acre of land. So that was some of the discussion that's been had.
So basically, if you guys remember, we left this off a few months ago, it was, they, they were asking for a long-term lease, and we were just kind of like not for sure what we were going to do with that building, because we had quite a bit of money we needed to sink into the heating and air conditioning, uh, the boilers and the chillers. So through these conversations we've had, and, uh, that's kind of where we thought would be a good thing, is, hey, they need this, but we also need the building upgraded, and that's one way I think we, we would be willing to give a long-term lease. So, uh, we don't have any specifics exactly, but we wanted to make sure that the rest of the council talks about this in a public meeting, and we, we got it out there that they're willing to help support the building, you know, if we help give them room to, to construct their garage.
But if, yeah, if you're, if, if the council is willing to entertain that idea and, and approve pursuing that, then, then we would take that back to our council, and, um, Clayton's been working on an official agreement, uh, that would allow for that. So if, if you have any more questions as to the discussions we've had, or, or how that would look.
I think it sounds like a win-win.
Yeah.
For all involved here.
So what, we had talked in the meeting that we had, uh, that there'll be a hub at, or a place for transportation located in Burn? Is that proper?
I currently have one in Burn.
Okay. And then, and then one here in Decatur at the Merritt Center, and you basically would be dispatched for all of them? Is that correct, Michelle?
Yeah.
There's one thing that I've learned about Michelle over the last year and a half at the Merritt Center, who took over, uh, for our administrator at the, the head office and guided people where they go. When she wants to do something, she gets it done. So I, I am very confident that she would be able to take the ball and run with this like a Heisman Trophy winner, in my opinion. So I, I personally am in, in very much support of doing this. I think it's nothing good, but a, a great partnership, an interlocal agreement.
The best way that I can help Michelle is get out of the way.
Get out of the way. When she calls, you better go to, right? But it's nothing, take that as a compliment, because it's been a, she's been really great at what she does, and I have full confidence in her administrative capabilities and her staff.
So I think would the next step be for you guys to go back to your council, your first, your meeting in May, and then we can freshen up our quotes on our boilers and chillers and everything we need done, and then we'll introduce a number at that point? Would that be?
Is there a feeling, uh, from your council as far as, is council on board moving ahead with this? Uh, I mean, and working out the details?
I am. I mean, at first, I was like, you know, I got, our first interest is the citizens, Decatur. What's in this for Decatur? And I think this is what collaboration looks like, and, and I welcome it, so.
Well, I think also, uh, Michelle's done a great job in getting the, the grant for this county. There has to be a garage built somewhere.
Right.
For this program, program to work. And what better place to do it than here, where it's going to not, will benefit the county and the public city as well. Agree.
I concur. And it's, we've already kind of got a campus on there for education, the seniors, and, and childcare's coming on board, and we're going to have a, that's just going to round out the, uh, the equation. I think it'd be a great solution.
Yeah. Does this property that we're talking about, does that touch those other two buildings that are sitting out there, or?
Not, not the north building. That, the north building is being used by Hero Wheels, um, and that, they just put a, a roof on that one, last year or the year after, or the year before?
Couple of years ago.
Couple of years ago.
I'm kind of thinking that might take in that whole corner, but maybe I'm mistaken.
I thought it was the south building and, and, and south of that even, wasn't it?
Well, I went out and stepped it off one day with you, and there's a hundred, a little over a hundred feet. I don't remember what the size, you're going to have to, are you going to have to make the building larger? Are you going to need to make the building larger?
I think it took over the whole corner.
Right.
We agreed not to touch the north building.
Yeah.
Okay.
It would still take in that north building.
There'd still be plenty of room.
Okay. Cause we, I stepped that off, and the south building, there's two buildings there, the south building is, it could go. I mean, and, and with that, you've already got the underground infrastructure for the water sewer, electrical is already there. So I mean, that could be taken out, but I didn't know how big a building, you said 50 at one time?
50 is what my original plans were.
Right. But if you're going to, if you're going to dou, you're going to double it now, I mean, you're going to need, I mean, there's room for expansion if you take out that building, because there's another 75 feet or so between the two buildings. And our, our hope is, is that when you start with that building, if, if you didn't have to disturb those folks on the north at the beginning, would that be okay? Would that be?
Yeah. I, I think we would have, but, you know, if, if we had that corner, you know, that would kind of isolate us and kind of segment out that corner for, so I, I don't know. Cause we talked about it both ways, so, yeah.
You say they just put a bunch of money in that building or something?
They, they put a roof on it, based on, with the agreement that we would allow them to stay in there and use that.
I'm with one of those, we pack those Hero Wheels every Thursday according to school schedules, and there's 75 of them, 75 kids at each of those.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's a regular thing.
Yeah. So that, that building, even, even if we took in that whole corner, clear, uh, bordering on, on Dayton and 12, you know, like, like we said, we wouldn't have to disturb that.
Yeah. There's nothing exterior use to me at all. Everything is inside the building, so.
Right.
I'm just thinking, do you square that up to begin with, and then the county can make an agreement with them, rather than, I mean, we really don't want those two buildings sitting there. I mean, it's great that it's getting used right now, and hopefully they can still use it, but like, I don't want to notch out a piece and then the city owns one building sitting right out there by the street.
I don't think that's what we're, I think we're talking about the whole square.
And they would.
Yeah, but we just don't want to kick them out right now, because we just allow them.
And they would, you know, need to do that. I, the, the only urgency that I see is, you know, for, for the county to take ownership of that land, and then we would put, put a garage before next winter to service the transportation service. So, and, and in return, uh, for, for the land and, and a agreement for a long-term lease, then we would participate in that HVAC upgrade to, to.
Yeah. I don't, I don't oppose the idea. I think it's probably a good idea. I guess we just need to know how much they need.
So I think you have the commitment from our council now. If you take it to your council, then we'll iron out all the details on exactly where those lines are and what that amount is, and, um, probably in our, our, our next meeting after your council meeting.
Okay. Well, when, when we do that, uh, would you see the next step being our, our small group meeting as we had, or would you like us to come before the full council?
I think the small group can iron out the details.
Yeah, I think we'll get, try to iron out the details in those, so then when we come to this meeting, we can, you can make an offer of what, what those details are.
Cause when we do that, we got a whole room full of attorneys, and they can get stuff done.
Do we need to get quotes on that?
The building?
The chillers?
Yeah. I think we'll, we'll have to get the, freshen up the quotes.
Real motivated.
Because I think there was some air conditioning there, we're talking about the front offices, too, that, so we'll get some fresh number, or fresh quotes for all that stuff.
Now, all you guys are talking about pushing the front right away is, it's 100 long and 71 and a half feet wide on that corner, and that, that keeps away from that north, that north building.
Oh, that's without touching the north one?
Yes, because those are individually plotted or out there.
So it would take a survey to separate that corner off, like we do.
No, no, that, that's just one.
No, but I mean, if we took the whole corner?
Yeah.
It would have to be re-surveyed.
Yeah, it would, because the next one would have to be on the right.
Yeah.
Well, that's some of the details that need to be ironed out.
So, yeah, if, if you're in agreement to pursue this, then I suppose the next step, we'll take it back to our council, and what's some rough numbers and the idea, and then look forward to sitting down with the small group again if you're okay with that.
Sounds great.
Much appreciated.
Good. Thank you very much. Yeah, thanks for coming in.
And I know there was some public questions at the end of the meeting, well, there'll be a chance, I'll ask if there's anybody in the public that has a question or wants to make a comment.
Okay. Next, we have the review of the CF1 form for AV Cinema. You guys have been filling it up, a couple of weekends here, it looked like.
We have been very busy, yes.
And I've noticed, well, I've noticed a lot of out-of-town places, too.
We have had an exceptional number of first-time people, and lots of people be like, how do you know they've never been there before? Cory and I, although it wasn't necessarily designed this way, a lot of times sort of us either working or fixing something or watching a movie ourselves, and you can always tell because they ask where the bathrooms are. They usually don't have to ask more than once, so, but we have, we've had an exceptional number of people coming from out of the area. We have some families that we know for sure that come down from Woodburn almost every weekend, the Portland area, Ohio, Huntington, Boston, and of course, obviously, Decatur, tons of local residents who, who visit the cinema sometime on a week, sometimes on a weekly basis, depending on what our movie schedules are, but, yeah, it's been, it's been busy. It's been, I think, a positive thing for the city over the last five and a half years, and, you know, hopefully, God willing, we'll, we'll keep it going and.
I can say that, you know, over the last, prior to five, six years ago, that was one thing I continually heard in the city is, we'll never have a movie theater in this city again, you know, so I, again, thank you guys for doing that. I mean, not only having one screen, now having two, and it was bad timing on the second screen, but everything's up and running now, and that's great. It's a great addition. So do we, is there anything, I know this is a little bit different than the initial stuff.
I forward it to everybody, so everybody's reviewed it, so it's up to you to say whether they're substantially compliant, which I don't say they are, so.
Have you had a hard time getting employees?
Uh, no. Generally speaking, we have found that we usually get our employees from our current employees, so we'll just ask, you know, hey, we're looking to add somebody, if anybody knows somebody who's looking for a job. Right now, our, our least seasoned employees, so to speak, have been with us for about nine months, and we have some staff that, well, if you include my son and daughter-in-law, we have some staff that have been with us for five and a half years. But our non-related staff, we have some staff that has been with us for three and four years. They came on early and they say most of our staff are high school kids or college students, but we do have some adults, too, that, that work for us. You know, it's usually a second job for them, it's convenient because it's generally weekend hours. I will note on the CF1, I hope that you would consider substantially compliant, as Phil puts it. When we put in the second theater, we thought we would have to add a couple more employees. We have not, we've actually maintained our 17 that we have had the last three or four years. They've not necessarily always been the same 17. That does include Cory and I, because we do work at the cinema, even though we are not included as part of the pay in the cinema, we don't take a check, everything goes back into the business. In fact, if you ask our accountant, we lose money every year, but that's not necessarily the point. So we do look at it as something for the community, and even though we haven't added staff, we did have added payroll. So we did have about $2,000, $2,200, $2,800 more in payroll than what was originally expected when we thought we would add two more staff members. So even though we haven't added people, the staff members that we have have either picked up additional shifts and can also increase pay. Our starting pay now is $8 an hour, it was minimum wage, $7.25. We don't have anybody right now who's only making $8 an hour. All of our staff makes more than that currently, so I think our highest paid employee is $12.60 an hour, I think is what they make.
Any questions, anymore?
I'll make a motion to approve the CF1 form.
I'll second.
Motion's second, any more discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Jeremy, I have on here to give an update on improvements to Riverside Center, do we want to talk about another collaboration with not just the county, but with a group of pickleball players? So we've had some groups meeting discussing these improvements, too.
Pickleball's been a pretty hot topic the last several years. Last fall, when the group that, that plays daily, weekly, it was a group of, what, probably six or seven, eight, probably more, local residents, county residents, city residents, were playing at Rev, playing at Service Complex, playing inside at Riverside Center. They come to us, the park board and myself and Merritt, probably August, September last year, they start kicking around, putting in more courts. So, you know, you always question, okay, more courts, where, where are we thinking? You know, what makes the most sense? So fast forward a few months, they sat down and they came up with a plan to redo the sand volleyball area behind Riverside Center. So we kicked that around for quite some time. There was an application through Community Foundation and through Adams County Commissioners, through the Art Fund, COVID-related funds. So we went through the application process through the county, going through county council, through the county commissioners. We were successful, or the group was successful, and myself and the park board securing $90, $94,000, you know, for county funds to put towards that facility. Tonight, this is more of an informational process, letting you know that, you know, we met with the, with the people.
Well, science itself, huh?
So basically, I'm not going to lie, this winter, when this group came, half of them were from outside the city, and they were wanting us to build more courts. And I said, a lot of you are county residents, and I don't think the county has any plans of putting any pickleball courts outside of the city limits, so why don't you go ask county commissioners and councils, see if they're willing to help? And they have, so they help, they're going to help fund a lot of this. So it's been, been great that they stepped up and are helping with this project.
So what, what we're planning on doing is taking the fencing and step down behind Riverside Center, replacing the fencing, expanding the fence down a ways, and adding up to six courts, and still maintaining one sand volleyball court. The majority of the, of the funds will be paid through the county art funds, not saying that we may not be coming back and asking for a few dollars here and there, just, just to make things right. My crew is going to go in, or the city crew is going to go in and do all the demolition, do the prep work. The county has agreed to have Brooks Construction do the paving this summer. We're still soliciting quotes for the rest of the work for the fencing and stuff like that, so. I want to thank the commissioners and county council for their help on this. It is on the city property, but it shows that we are working together for the betterment of the community, not just the city, not just the county.
We had, there's flags during the Easter egg hunt in the sand volleyball, is that what was laid out in there?
There's a couple of different areas that's laid out in there.
Okay.
It's nothing that, that, it's 100%. There will be a pavilion put up there also on the east end, that could also be used for different activities, you know, help out the parks.
A lot of festivals have a few vendors along there.
Oh, yeah.
And it's 90 degrees out, this, this will be nice, a little pavilion where maybe those vendors can set up there, so.
We have several overgrown pine trees that are pasted in their.
Their prime life.
Expectancy.
Yeah.
Those will be coming down, the park board has agreed to re-landscape all the way around the facility after it's completed. So I, I know Rotary Club's reached out with a couple of different ideas and stuff on that project, so also we want to thank them for their involvement in, in this process. At the same time, we have also received some great money from the Adams County Community Foundation to turn and kind of redo the, the two courts, turn into three courts at the Rev Sports Complex. So we're also going to be working on that as the weather warms up, to get that pretty well situated, so. It's a great improvement. Hopefully, you know, we get a lot of years' use out of this. You know, currently, they're playing at Rev and ornamenting at Merritt Center, inside at Riverside Center, the Service Complex.
While we're, while we're talking pickleball and Merritt Center, is there a way to improve the lighting where they play pickleball?
Merritt Center.
Yes. That's just a request I have from some of the pickleball players that says it's hard to see. I don't know what the lighting looks like there.
I've played there a few times, or I've played there numerous times, but.
You can see.
Yeah, I can ask whoever it is about me. I'm sure, being that it's an old elementary school, I'm sure, we were just talking about the electric bills.
It'd be nice to have some LED lights.
The whole building, because electric bills are expensive every month, for sure.
Were upgraded.
Were they?
Yeah.
How long ago was that, Wiley?
I'm sorry, you gotta open yourself.
There were no LED lights at that time.
Okay. So they're how?
I'm thinking, yeah, I'm thinking.
Well, there's certain school teachers I liked better than others, and I really liked Mrs. DeJonge, so when Mrs. DeJonge asks, I'd say she would like some better lighting at the Merritt Center. We'll look into it.
So tonight, it's more of an informational thing, not asking for any technical funding at this point. I do ask quotes out, or request for quotes for your three little projects that we may be talking about here in, in the short term. So just, I know you're going to be questioning people drive by and see the fences down and, you know, you put a volleyball court out, and so, you know, we're just going to one volleyball court, potentially, potentially up to six.
Yeah, two, there're going to be four or six.
We'll see everything lays out, once we get the fence down, once we see what, what all's up in the same.
Good.
Again, I want to reiterate what Jeremy said, you know, thanks to Stan and the county, and the county council, and Rotary, and Community Foundation for helping, you know, this has definitely been a group effort and just another collaboration, you know, just like we talked about earlier, so this is great.
It's good to see that we're, we're working together.
Yep. Okay. Thanks, Jeremy. Do you have anything else? Counsel. Oh, I do, I need to get permission to, we have some people going to the chamber dinner on Thursday night, so I'm just requesting permission to, for to sponsor those people attending.
Got to make a motion to sponsor attendance to the chamber dinner. I have to accuse myself.
Okay, motion's second, on favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Okay. Jeremy?
No.
Come on ahead. Jeremy?
We made it through every trash. It's, it was average this night, but it was a lot of mattresses. So we get to number.
There were 75 on Wednesday, they told me at the dump when I went, we've been counting.
75?
75 on Wednesday.
Is there a mattress sale somewhere?
I don't know, they were counting them.
There you go.
I would, I would really like to sell mattresses instead of trash.
Yeah, both Adams Central and North Adams have the mattress sale.
Just as a reminder, yard waste starts this week, so if you have items, you can set them out with your normal trash day, when we'll be around.
How do you want those?
Um, you can put them in the can or you can, or you can bag it. We are trying a different process.
Not in the trash, not the trash cans that we provide, not in those, right?
No, separate trash can.
Okay.
Or, or bags, or, you know, people get pretty creative when they set that stuff up. Just, just to give you an idea of how the change is, we're using a lot of our former garbage trucks for yard waste collection. The city's grown, obviously, over the last several years. In the past, we've always tried to pick it up with a one-ton dump truck and two or three, some are kids or two or three full-time, and we were getting to the point that the trees are getting bigger, the landscape's getting bigger, we just wasn't getting it done in any big time. Don't be alarmed if a garbage truck comes through your, through your housing addition or stops up front, and they throw the items in the garbage truck. They're still taking it to the compo site, it's still separated out, grass, vegetation, and then they're coming around getting the sticks, the, the same way. It's going to look different, but it's still going to the compo site.
Right.
We're pretty limited on how we can pick it up. It was either use a piece of equipment we have, or go out and spend a couple hundred thousand dollars on another piece of equipment, so.
Right.
We're trying to use what we have and make it work. It's actually going to work real well. Instead of taking 25 or so bags, or 25 or so loads of grass clippings to the compo site every day, five days a week, we're going to get it in half of, half of the truckload. It's still going to the same place, it's still being recycled, it's just the pickup method. So.
Okay.
Water's on in the parks, ball games are starting. There, there's a lot of games out Rev, happening daily as the weather cooperates. Mike Tyler, the girls start May 1st.
Yeah, May 1st. I think St. Joe has a game out there on Thursday.
So you're, you're seeing a lot of activities in the parks, please be mindful, you know, the kids are out running around, they're trying to enjoy the 70, 80 degree days. Watch your speed, just know that, you know, the kids are out in the parks. We're getting several calls about mulch out to compo site, that is controlled by Adams County Sound Waste District, and they are planning on grinding the mulch pile at the end of this month. So the month of May, we will load on Tuesdays and Thursdays, from 3:00 to 5:00, and on Saturday mornings from 8:00 to 10:00. So other than that, there's a lot of projects coming up, a lot of paving coming up, we're keep you alerted as to the progress and as we know more than scheduled.
Okay, thanks. Chris, I think you want to bring up something about the, at the Merritt Center, right?
Yes, we got a, our training map for the pavement tactics, the police officers' map at the Merritt Center. We'd like permission to tear down some partitions that separate the rooms, and maybe pave the rooms, maybe a little nicer in there.
So basically, at the Merritt Center, a lot of things are brought to the Merritt Center board, but I'd ask them, since if you're making any kind of structural change or anything like that, I'd rather go before council. They, the police have been giving the one double room.
On the east wing?
It's on the east wing, yeah, and they're.
That has that portable dividing?
Yeah, right. Yeah, right. And so with the rest on mass, they, they're, they're too wide for where those partitions stick out. So they're just asking to take those down.
So those port, taking the portable dividers down?
Right. And then they're, do some painting in that room.
Make, make a motion to allow it.
I'll second. Motion second, on favor?
Aye.
Pose, same side. Thanks. Anything else, Chris?
This Saturday is National Drug Takeback Saturday for DE. It's, they also, we're doing a drug takeback in the police department from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Bring your drugs in or unloaded medications and we'll dispose those for you.
Okay.
It's 24 hours a day, but it is a, we have a new receptacle up front. We've got restored remaining. It's not going to be a nice horse for them, the drugs.
Yeah, I checked it out. It has a little spout or a little funnel into there.
They'll have deals and stuff before. And we don't want to be those liquids. So we could add, quote, by deals in the shop.
Right.
Off the horse.
Right. All right. Jeff?
Hi.
Come.
Uh, the first legal ad for painting the South Tower was in the paper day. It'll be in next Tuesday. And then we should have bids for the next meeting on May 2nd. The water project on South Fifth and Elm Street moving along. We have new water main up and down South Fifth. Lopez Lane and part Elm Street. I think Josh, within the next few weeks, is gonna wanna replace a bunch of the stormwater structures down in that area too, all four up. So that area will be completely revamped once, once all these improvements are done. And then also, I think tomorrow, Josh is gonna be out at North End Homestead doing some stormwater projects in there. Same thing, that roads four up and due to be paved. And there's a lot of drainage issues in that North End Homestead, you know, along just south of North Entrance, Homestead on High Street. There's a lot of yards that are always packed up. So you can put a few in like some 9252 there too.
Good. I think I took some calls about that over the last month. All right. Tony's here. Anything? Kurt? Okay. Carrie?
Um, we've had our items section and that went well. We're looking on trying to review our project. If there's a chance, revolving the outfall and the erasure, thank you, Anne, for your efforts to do that. Outfall, you've been taking.
That didn't take long. Okay. Anything from Anne?
No.
Phyllis? Counsel? Okay, anything from public?
I have a question for Stan.
Yep.
In regards to, so will there be the elderly and disabled adults, will they take residence over, say, a student or community member needing transportation to probation? Or will it be a first come, first served?
Once, once we open it up to the public, it is a first come, first served. So there's gonna be no way for the dispatchers to prioritize the importance of one run over. So, so, yeah, it, it'll just be open as scheduled.
The key will be to, I'm sure, setting appointments up ahead of time.
Probably, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's the key with that.
There's also, should be six buses available too. I imagine six people at the same time, all.
Anything else from public? June 17th is Downtown Decatur Day. It's coming up about two months away. Got a lot of new exciting things going on. I think Police and Fire is gonna have a battle of dunk tanks or something. So that'll be interesting. And then, yeah, we'll definitely get Chris in there. But we're gonna have a golf, a golf cart parade. That's something new we're going to do. And it's a fundraiser for the Kikyanga Project. So we're really excited about that. And hopefully have good weather that day. There's a lot of, a lot of new things going on that day.
Okay, motion to pay the claims.
Second. Motion second to pay the claims, on favor?
Aye.
Pose, same side.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion second, on favor?